Team 2014 Manistee City Council Meeting to Order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, can you please take the roll?
Mayor Kenny?
Here.
Councilmember Cody?
Here.
Councilmember Harpold?
Here.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tamsary?
Here.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Here.
Councilmember Gussad?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
DPDW director?
Here.
Finance director?
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments and agenda-related items, this is the portion of the meeting, if any citizens in attendance has a comment on tonight's agenda, please come forward and state your name and address. Is there anyone who would like to comment on tonight's agenda? So now we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, approval of payroll, monthly bills, consideration of adopting ordinance 14-1, Chapter 2, some of the Housing Commission amendments, consideration of adopting ordinance 14-02, Chapter 289 Parks and Beautification Commission amendments, consideration of adopting new ordinance 14-03, Chapter 663 fireworks, consideration of adopting ordinance 14-04, 692 weeps, consideration of adopting ordinance 14-05, Chapter 1028 River Street Traffic Flow, Parking and amenities, and nullification regarding next work section.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. If we could please add language to item 10, Concerns and Comments, Allowing Action by City Council on Four, not Three, Collective Bargaining Agreements Upon Returning From Executive Session.
I'd also like to remove the consideration of adopting new ordinance 14-03, Chapter 663 fireworks from the consent agenda.
Support.
I have a motion to add the item E under number 10, consideration of collective bargaining agreements with USW, the POAM, COM, and IAFF unions when we return from executive session, and we will be removing the consideration of adopting ordinance on the fireworks and taking it up in the regular business. Any other discussion?
If we approve this or not approve, three, four different votes. Obviously, if you're going to make these all in one vote to accept or deny, I will have to abstain totally from every vote because my wife made a city cop.
We can vote.
Yeah?
You're going to approve the collective bargaining, you're just voting to place it on the agenda as of after the vote session?
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seanai, can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Harpold?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tamsary?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gussad?
Yeah.
Motion approved. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to consideration of adopting a new ordinance 14-03, Chapter 663 fireworks. City council discussed the creation of a new ordinance to limit fireworks being discharged within the city of Manistee. No person shall ignite, discharge, or use commercial fireworks in the city between the hours of 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM. This prohibition shall not preclude a person from igniting, discharging, or using consumer fireworks within the city of the day preceding, the day of, or the day after a national holiday, consistent with Act 256, except between the hours of 1:00 AM to 8:00 AM on those days. This ordinance has been reviewed and supported by the Council Ordinance Committee. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. This ordinance was first introduced at the regular meeting of June 3, 2014, and could be adopted at this time. Is there a motion to take action?
I make a motion. Support?
Motion by Councilmember Cody, support by Councilmember Gussad to adopt that ordinance. I'd remove this, I just want to again state my concerns for the number of hours that we are allowing these commercial fireworks. I think it's, again, too broad and needs to be limited, either limited more or eliminated except for what the state requires. I just didn't want that passed on the consent agenda. Any other concern?
I know there's some concern about enforcement and if you process it, the enforcement actually is less intrusive to our law enforcement than it is. The more we regulate that, the more they have to get out and enforce that. So for me, it allows the police department to focus on safety matters versus trying to chase down and chase people who are laying off fireworks. The more restrictive you make it, the more they're going to get called to make those calls. Just makes sense to regulate it in a fashion, to me, in the way we've written it here, so...
Chief Bachman said that the easiest thing for him would not to approve this, you know, other than what we had to by state law.
I guess after some thinking, I would like to move the 1 o'clock hour to midnight on the ordinance.
Thank you.
It's the second review.
The one that is in the House, that's state law.
Yeah.
So which one are you referring to?
The, except the hours between 1:00 AM and 8:00 AM on the day preceding, the day of, and the day...
That's a state statute.
That's a state statute. That's a statute. So what you're recommending, what you're suggesting possibly is either do less restrictions or just stand under these state...
Be more restrictions for the state. And our chief of police, Director of Public Safety, said the easiest thing for him, at the time we talked about this.
Would need to go with the Michigan Public Act 256? For the total wording for it, I really see no problem with that. What is the difference, though, between it? Chief Bachman?
Chief Bachman isn't a fire right now.
I was afraid of that. I couldn't tell if he was here or not.
He's not.
Do you know what the difference is between, because what we have is, other than the holidays...
It's unlimited, other than 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM. Every day of the week, somebody can shoot off fireworks continuously from 8:01 AM to 10:59 PM, if they so choose.
That is correct.
And they're within their legal limits.
That's even during the holidays, so they have to...
Holidays, it's even more narrow. They have until 1:00 AM on those holidays.
Okay.
And that's my concern. I mean...
Have we researched other communities, other ordinances, what they do, or is it all over the spectrum?
May I ask you if I can answer that question for you tonight?
And I know we're getting down to the wire right now for it.
The intent was, the intent went last year, when this law came up, you recall, the law came up at the very last second, and we were in a rush state to try and do something before the Fourth of July. And that rush state wasn't anything council brought forth, it was the timing that the state of Michigan was making changes to their state fireworks in Act 256. The intent from administration this year was to get it in front of council early enough, so you had that information prior to the Fourth of July weekend.
Did the ordinance committee unanimously agree to this?
I believe we did.
I believe you, I...
As it was understood at that time.
I would have to go back, I don't know if the minutes from that particular thing came along with you, but it was approved by the ordinance committee. I don't recall off the top of my head whether that was unanimous or not, but we have several ordinance committee members here. Councilmember Whitlock, Gussad, and Zaring, Mayor Pro Tamsary are on the ordinance committee. And I believe, looking at all three of those, that it was unanimously approved at that point.
The other concern about, just going back to the day before, day of, and day after, when the porch of life falls on a Wednesday, and somebody comes up here for the weekend, the day prior to or after, they're going to be written, they're going to get a ticket for letting off fireworks on us Friday night when it's two days after the Fourth of July. It doesn't allow for any type of activity other than the day before, the day of, and the day after. And when those Fourth Julies fall on an odd day, other than a Friday or a Saturday, it's really, I think, is overpolicing that benefit that the state has passed.
It's the public act, it's just the holidays.
So if Fourth of July falls on a Wednesday, you're able to have fireworks Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, at 1:00 AM, and the only restrictions is 1:00 AM to 8:00 AM. That's what the state law allows for.
And I understand Councilmember Gussad's concern in what, but I feel for one holiday out of the year, we're really opening this up for the rest of the year. And that's my concern. And it's way too, way too broad.
Council, recall, this was subject to a work session discussion, and all of those different, of which Mayor Kenny expressed exact same concerns during that work session.
Any other?
You know, I think the ordinance committee did their due diligence on it, and I don't want to second guess them, and I read the ordinance a couple times, and I guess what we can do is see how it works. If we do have a big problem, we can change the ordinance at a later time.
An ordinance can always be changed by council, and like any other ordinance, takes two readings, and can be amended. This is a charter where required voter in public, this is fully within council's purview to keep it or change it, just to see fit.
And that was my, I guess you could say reasoning behind my vote on the ordinance committee, was that, give it a try, see how it works. If it's unwieldy for our police officers, then our public safety officers, then we'll go back to the drawing board and change it.
Yet, comments? Michelle, can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Harpold?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tamsary?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gussad?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
No.
Motion approved.
Thank you. New business. Consideration of Housing Commission by Law Amendments. Manistee Housing Commission took action on their April 22, 2014 meeting to review and approve changes to their bylaws. A copy of the bylaw showing proposed amendments has been attached. Amendments bring the bylaws into compliance with the Michigan PA 18 in conjunction with recent ordinance amendments. At this time, council could take action to approve the amendments.
Only if a motion, the council, take action to approve amendments to the bylaws of the Manistee Housing Commission and authorize the mayor to execute the document. I'll support.
I have a motion by Councilmember Harpold, support by Councilmember Cody, to approve the amendments to the bylaws of the Housing Commission. Is there any discussion? Seanai, can you please take the roll?
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Gussad?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tamsary?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Harpold?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of certifying a section of 12th Street for inclusion on the City Act 51 map. Michigan Department of Transportation requires the city's street administrator to review and certify the official Act 51 street map on an annual basis. In reviewing the current map, it was discovered that sections of 12th Street between Oak and Elm, and Elm and Tammerack were never certified by the city after the street was accepted for Manistee area public schools in 2009. Certifying this street segment will allow the city to receive Act 51 money for maintenance activities. Is there a motion for council to take action and approve the resolution?
I would like to make a motion at this time, that council take action to approve a resolution certifying two sections of 12th Street between Oak and Tammerack for inclusion with the City of Manistee street network.
I'll support that.
I have the motion by Mayor Pro Tamsary, and support by Councilmember Cody, to approve the resolution certifying the two sections of 12th Street. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. The question I have, was that section ever brought up to city specs?
The section that we're talking about was constructed by Manistee High School and the, or Manistee area public schools. Manistee area public schools, as far as I'm aware, was given the minor street standards for the City of Manistee, and at the time, built a driveway that conformed to the city's minor street standards, with the long-term intention of eventually dedicating that over to the city as part of the city streets. All of that action did occur, there were easements transferred, and once the school acquired the property, not just in this section, but all the way up to Cherry Street, then the city acquired that from the school system. One step that was missing for us is, it was never then formally incorporated into our official street network, which is a map that's created under Act 51, and that's how the city receives its share of revenues for street maintenance.
So I wonder, the question, the answer here is yes, it conforms to it? Or is there a difference between the construction of a local street and net street?
That is, that has been built to local street standards, and prior to the city accepting it from the school, it was measured, the pavement was cored, and the gravel was tested for the thickness, and then all of the testing records from the original construction were obtained by the city in order to confirm, confirm, sorry, that it did meet the local street standards.
Okay, so in other words, the whole section is the same as on the other side of Maple, on the east side of Maple, same construction?
No, it's not.
No, it's not? So now we're just going, is that considered major there?
Yes.
And we're going to turn it into, are we going to improve this, we didn't bring it up to a major street?
When I certified the Act 51 map this year, there's several small discrepancies throughout the city, there's probably a dozen of them that I identified, but there wasn't time to go through all of the process to get those amended, and they really didn't affect any revenue streams for the city, except for this one. So we did request that that section, I made the request when we submitted the map, that it be incorporated into the street network as a major street. And so there's really two different requests there, one to be added into the major, into the street system, the other to have it switched from a minor street to a major street. MDOT accepted the request for the major street, but there was one little piece of 12th Street at the end of Elm. If you remember back when the high school track was built, there was one little segment at Elm Street that kind of came down and hooked, I think it was back where the shot putting pit was. That actually was incorporated into the street network way back when, and so the description that the school had provided us started at Tammerack and went to Oak Street, but it overlapped that little piece. So we had to get new legal descriptions and get it submitted, and MDOT allowed us to submit it that way as long as we followed up with this resolution. So I guess to answer your question, it is currently, if you accept this tonight, it is currently a minor street, and we have made the request from MDOT that it become a major street due to the traffic volumes, which will then allow us to access grant monies through MDOT in the future.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Will this have any impact on the other section between Oak and, and Chapel, or not, in Maple?
It will be contiguous to that, but doesn't have a direct effect on that. It just simply creates the road segment between Tammerack and Oak Street as it exists and is used today, but we get no, we get no revenues from the state to maintain that, so this helps us get our fair share.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other ramifications other than that for the city, for...
I think this is all positive for us.
There's no downside or any other issues to be concerned about?
None that I'm aware of. We've already accepted the physical asset, now we're simply putting it into the official system.
Have we ever done any traffic counts on 12th Street from Maple to the school?
I don't know, years ago, there was a lot of discussion about doing a traffic study, and I think it centered around the Lockwood development that was proposed at Tammerack and 12th. And I think that was a requirement of the planning commission, if I remember, but I don't, I'm not aware that that ever actually took place. So it's not to my knowledge.
I'd like to see a traffic count on that street, you know...
We started those conversations with the road commission. Typically, when we do traffic counting in the city, we partner with the road commissioner, who's got the equipment and the software, and so they've got it deployed right now, and we're working to get that out there.
Okay. I think the important part of this, as Jeff has alluded to, that there'll be other changes to the Act 51 map that he's come across that will require council amendments in the future.
Yeah, some of those examples are a street that we vacated, but it's still on the map, or a street that we've improved, but it wasn't improved on the map, and so there's, I think when I bring the rest of the changes forward to you, they're going to be very minor and probably net zero to our revenue stream. But there's housekeeping items. This one's a little more significant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks. Any others? Michelle, can you please take the roll?
Mayor Pro Tamsary?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Gussad?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
No.
Councilmember Harpold?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Historic District Commission. All appointments by the mayor are subject to council approval unless otherwise specified by statute ordinance. Dominations for council appointments do not require a second. After a member of council nominates an individual appointment, council shall vote on the nomination. Majority vote in favor of placement in the nominee is required for appointment. The filing applications have been received. Historic District Commission, two vacancies, one three-year term ending 2/2017, one unexpired term ending 2/2015. Victims must be city residents, this is a council appointment. We have one applicant, Thomas R. Smith of 703 Hopkins Street.
I nominate Thomas R. Smith of 703 Hopkins Street for the Historic District Commission for the three-year term ending 02/2017.
I'll support that.
Michelle, can you please take the roll on his nomination?
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Harpold?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tamsary?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gussad?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Now, let's move on to notices, communications announcements, presentation of proposed improvements to Veterans Memorial Park. Manistee County Veterans Group would like to continue their work at Memorial Park to honor veterans. Using concept plans drafted by architect Kendrick Thompson, they would like to place six plaques, viewing benches, and appropriate landscaping east of the memorial along Memorial Drive adjacent to the sidewalk. They would like the city to be on board with the concept due to the cost involved. At this time, Ted Aaronson and Kendra Thompson will make a presentation.
Thank you. I'm Kendra Thompson, local architect. I have to say that when I walked into the room and I saw so many gentlemen and ladies, I had to take a breath back and just say that this is truly an honor to be able to stand before you and have the discussions that we're going to have this evening. And it's because of the sacrifices, the dedication, and the commitment of these fine folks. There are many places, as we all know, in this world, that are not quite as blessed and as fortunate as we are with the freedoms that we have, so thank you to each and every one of you. Did you have some that you wanted to talk about first?
Ted asked me to go through these slides, so whichever direction we go, would you like the plan up first right now?
No, let's take a look at what Mitch has. As many of you know, the veterans have been working on making improvements to the Veterans Memorial, it's located on Memorial Drive on the north shore of the river, and I've been working with them for the past few years on those improvements, and they've been significant. So Mitch has the pictures here where the original, the existing Veterans Memorial was very stately, very simple, and very tasteful, but in the spirit of wanting to elevate public awareness and continue to offer dedication and memorials and so forth to veterans and enhance that area, we have taken a look at developing that entire north shore area. And part of that included, as you can see, a significant improvement with the gateway into the parking area. What we did was basically utilize designs similar to what we have downtown with the River Street streetscape, and massaged it a little bit, and developed the gateway coming in off of Memorial Drive into the parking area. So it's quite a significant dedication. We did that with the efforts of many contributors. Manistee Rotary Clubs were instrumental in that, Manistee Community Foundation, as well as a number of private donors to...
I'll go listen up a little bit more, you can see the black granite that Mr. Kieskowski has been so instrumental in.
So we added to each end of the original monument, flanking pieces continuing to honor our local veterans. In addition to that, we developed a plaza area with some nice landscaping. There's a dedication plaque and some further education for public awareness, trying to elevate the level of public awareness to the role that our veterans have played in our freedom. The beautiful benches that you see there were handcrafted by Ken Gilbert using the old hackett berry trees that had been on the riverbank, and flagpoles, we'll work at the flagpoles and some illumination, and so it's really become an enhanced area that we're quite proud of. Did you have any more pictures, or is that...
Okay, I'll...
Okay. So in the spirit of trying to continue the efforts that are desired by the veterans, again, trying to continue honoring and making dedications to those veterans and those activities that veterans participated in, we're looking to continue that, going from the location of the existing memorial eastward towards US 31 Bridge, as the sidewalk, municipal sidewalk continues down there to the 31 Bridge. The drawing you see before you, and you have in your packet, is just a conceptual sketch, the concept being that there's pockets, if you can imagine, visualize that area out there, there's those pockets of trees that line that riverbank, and what we'd like to do is start developing areas of reflection in between each of those trees. So what you're seeing here is the municipal sidewalk that goes along the Memorial Drive, and then pulling off a pocket of pavement, whether it's concrete or actual pavers, but pavers will be cost dependent, and then, as Mitch zooms in here, and then we replace a bench in that area between each set of trees, and we'll probably look to put two dedication plaques on each side of that bench, probably stanchion mounted, and a bronze plaque, each one depicting, again, either a significant event or a significant person... event or a significant person that played a role in their freedom that we have. This would consist of, we have basically three pockets that we could put there, so a total of, we're anticipating six dedication plaques for this area. Obviously, as time goes on, funds become available, we're able to work cooperatively with the city. We would love to take this down on the North Shore River Walk, the boardwalk, and develop that and reconstruct that and perhaps look to continue putting memorial dedication plaques along that area too. But we understand that that's a timely and costly endeavor. I have a couple of pictures. This is on there. I brought with me a couple of pictures of samples. It's amazing what technology allows sign companies to do now. We're able to take photographic images and artwork and really create a vignette or collage on a bronze plaque. So it's not just the typical, you've got a bunch of words on a bronze plaque. We're able to depict through photographic images the spirit of what the message being delivered. So we're looking forward to doing that as we progress on these plaques. This is just one. There's another one. These are just some samples that pulled off from the sign companies. So you can see how these plaques become quite significant as opposed to just merely words. And then in regards to the benches, I think Mr. Gilbert may be getting exhausted with his hackett berry wood in the benches. So we may need to look at doing just very simple benches. This one, we may look to use the Ibia wood, similar to what you have on the downtown benches. We could work with city staff on the actual selection of those benches and what they would like to see and what's most appropriate. We are looking to do benches that are backless, so with the intent that the reflective moments may actually be with the back to the street and facing the river. So we probably do benchless or backless benches, and they may be something of this sort. The company that you do have your benches from, that you have lining River Street, have a similar type of bench. So we'll coordinate with city staff on that. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ted Arons, and I have to tell you, Ted has been the real mover and shaker, as many of you know Ted, and has really rolled up his sleeves, counted the electric company to get them to bury electrical lines at minimal cost to us. He's really been the motivating factor in getting the work done. There's a whole group of guys, but Ted tends to be the guy that no one can say no to. So Ted?
Thanks, Kendra. By the way, Kendra has donated all her time on this effort, so we really appreciate it. Good evening, the air council members. Mr. Daish, Mr. McCullough, Fox Division members, I want to thank you all for the latitude that you have given us and the support to the veterans of this community. I came back before one year and I saw Bob Gankards, he's here tonight. Bob was working on the memorial with Tim Kiskowski, they were putting these panels on. So I wanted to help. Bob's the one that got it all going, so we really appreciate it. We have some other people here tonight I want to mention. Ms. Starlock Owens, she's a Gold Star Mother, she's here tonight and paid a heavy price for, in the service of our country through sacrifice of her son. Mr. Jack B. is here. Jack was on the USS Liberty. We can't forget Mr. Kowalski. I'm sure everybody knows him. So one of the things I want to do, there's two things I'd like to do. Number one is, well, they're both the same. I want to get kids involved with the veterans. And the way I propose to do it is offer scholarship to high school. I believe it's going to be high school seniors left. I want to work with Laura Einzmann and the YAC, this is the Youth and Value Committee, go through the rules. But basically, what I would do is offer scholarship to students by writing a two-page essay, have the teachers at the schools and the county, speak throughout the whole county, condense it down to ten essays, and then have the United Veterans Council pick the one. And then we'd send the money to the college of the choice, or technical school doesn't have to be a college, that's why I'm not concerned. And my wife Pam's agreed to pay for it. Including the first monument. So the second thing I'd like to do is I'd like to get the wording, I don't know if you have the postword in the Chinese. I'd like to, you know, sometimes things get political, and I want to make sure you're all on board with this. And once Mitch gets it up there, I'll get the word, I'll read it to you.
I'm not sure Mitch can get it up there unless some...
All right, I can read it to you. What? I'd like to have, I've got to propose, honestly, is the wording that Mitch and I and Dr. George Wagner, who was probably here two, three years ago, asking to start this for me. The proposed wording on the monuments on this Navy American intelligence ship was attacked by the state of Israel, resulting in the deaths of 34 Americans and the wounded of 173 out of the crew of 295. The American Navy government said the attack was an accident, and then I have a quote by the doctor on board, Dr. Kiefer was wounded himself, he operated for almost 48 hours. And he had, his intestines were completely, like, jeffered, you know, it was telling him he operated for, he was only a doctor, and that meant he wounded. You can imagine just what he went through. He says, "Never before in the history of the United States Navy has a Navy Board of Inquiry ignored the testimony of American military eyewitnesses and taken, enshrined the word of their attackers." I would like to have a motion that you approve that wording. And then I personally would like the optional sentence added, because for people that don't have flip phones, we're going to have the Moore Commission. Admiral Moore investigated the attack because the United States government wouldn't do it. And he did it with Admiral Starrett, who was the chief legal officer of the Navy, once they got out. General Davis, Medal of Honor of the United States Marine Corps, and a, I believe it was Ambassador at Hopkins, he was an ambassador. The United States government refused to investigate it and show marked investigations. There's nothing official on record. And so I'd like to have their statement on there. And then Captain Wardbossen, he was the Navy JAG investigating officer who had the one week investigation, that's all he was given, and then he closed it up. So I'd like a motion that we accept the wording on the first thing, and if you might discuss any optional, I'd like to have a second motion on the optional wording. And Mitch, you may have some comment on that.
My concern was is that we were into public park. It's not a traditional plaque, as many of us have seen on memorials, and I just want to make sure that council had the opportunity to look at the language that Mr. Arons and Dr. Wagner and I had discussed in my office yesterday afternoon.
And I guess I share his same concerns. It's a Veterans Memorial Park. We're honoring all those who died, no matter how they died. And I would hate to start putting wording out there that could be considered political in nature. I totally would support putting something out there to recognize that, you know, 34 Americans were killed in this particular action, but I guess I would prefer to see different kinds of wording. I understand that there's strong feelings about this situation. However, I think it might open the door for possibly more type of plaques that want to state a political type feeling, and I really don't think that would be the place for it.
Personally, I don't think it's political because it's fact, you know, this is what happened.
And I understand that, but I think if the American government wouldn't state that, then others may not say that that's fact. And that's why I don't want the city to get into the middle of, yes, that's true or not true. I would like to honor those that died in that. I see no problem with that, but I'm a little sensitive to the wording.
I think it's important, you know, tonight we said the pledge allegiance, you know, we said the liberty is our system. Well, what does that mean? Are we going to, if, for example, I don't know if you read my article on Benghazi, you know, that was in the paper, that Benghazi, there's going to be a congressman who's going to investigate, he's all over YouTube, his name's Gao Li, is a former prosecutor, and they're all hoping to go on Benghazi because they can make a political deal out of it, you know? Republicans want to be up on the Democrats. And here, Benghazi's only a few years old, only four people died. You know, on the liberty, we had 34 people die, almost 73 wounded, and they don't, they refuse to do anything. So I almost feel like it's a duty for the American public to come forward and say, "Look, look, American government, you have to investigate this. You have a right as an American citizen and certainly as a service member, I mean, you know, to have this investigated, you know? Starlock Owens, her son died for this country, I mean, there's all the families out there just like her, many, many families. The attack on the USS Liberty has created lots of alcoholics, worked on many, many marriages. These guys were threatened by, the day after the attack, I don't know if you know this man, but the day after the attack, when they got all wounded on board, Admiral Kip came on board, and he said to the men, "If you talk about this, we're going to put you in prison and throw away the key." Then they sent a ship, that ship I believe even has a 30 by 40 foot gash in it, they sent it on a seven-day cruise to Malta. As the bodies are floating out of the hole of the ship, they could have gone to Crete one day earlier. And then they fixed it up, they patched it up in Malta, and they sent it over to Lower Creek, Virginia. They don't send it to Norfolk, that was their home base, they sent it to Lower Creek, they cleared out the whole base, so no Navy personnel would be there. They had a small little band, and they had the family come there, and that's how they welcomed the ship home. And they gave, they gave the captain a Medal of Honor, Captain McGonville. He is the only person in modern day history that was not given a Medal of Honor at the White House because Lyndon Johnson didn't want to attract attention to it. So I don't want to have minimized the wording on the, I want the American people to know what happened. They don't, they don't stand what I'm saying, I mean.
Understanding.
I want to be clear, and it's not a political statement, I think it's a right of every American citizen to have access to the justice system in America, especially, especially the guys that died for America, that gave their life to America, they have a right to it. They have that right as an American citizen. So I don't want to minimize the wording and make it smaller and, you know, less effective than what it should be. And that's my personal opinion.
I really don't think anything would be minimized, to be perfectly honest, if you kept it very simple. The, not to diminish the sacrifices made by the men on the USS Liberty, but the teaser at the end with the quote.
We can do the teaser, we can get rid of the teaser.
No, no, I would leave the teaser. That first part where it ends with the American government and Israelis say the attack was an accident, period. And then you follow with a quote from Dr. Kiefer that is even more powerful, I believe, than if you put the rest of the wording in there.
It would be acceptable, maybe.
Because I'm with you. I do not want to see the sacrifices made by these people and any before and since to be denigrated in any way by our US government.
Thank you.
What I'd like to see is making this a work session, because obviously, we're talking about putting many plaques and many monuments out there. And I guess I would like more of a discussion and bringing in maybe the Parks and Beautification Committee as to, before we start putting these plaques and monuments out there, whether there should be guidelines or not.
Have you discussed it three, four meetings with Parks and the committee already?
Well, this is the first, it's been brought to my attention tonight, this wording. And I've not discussed it, they've not brought it to council and discussed this. I would just like the opportunity for more discussion before we proceed.
Do you have a timeline you have to meet?
I'd like to get this, I'd like to get this done.
Mr. Arons, I agree with you 100%. I don't think it's political. I was in the Navy, I appreciate the gentleman that's a survivor from the liberty, and I think we've got to put the onus on the federal government. And I don't think it's a political statement at all. I think the truth is the truth. You've done a lot of background on this, and why prolong it any longer?
Maybe we could have a motion to hold on it.
I agree with Councilman Harple. After doing some research on the liberty last night, for what everybody went through on her, it's just, it's totally amazing that she even flew a torpedo going through her both sides, Portland Starboard, and then going on a seven-day cruise to, or not a cruise, but going to Malta to get prepared. And then the damning words of Lyndon Johnson. He wanted her on the bottom.
I feel like it's really hard for me to give input on what I think you've done a phenomenal job on. I never served, nor I had the opportunity to have a family member serve, but I had hold the, our military and our forces in the most highest regard, and God bless you for doing things like this to memorialize people that have given their lives. And it's hard for me to scratch one word out of that. I couldn't imagine, you didn't put that down there on when, these were things that were articulated over, I'm sure, very painstaking efforts, going to talk to veterans, to research, and personally, I couldn't imagine scratching a word. If you feel that's what needs to be there, then...
I do.
And I agree, one question I do have for you, Mr. Arons, and again, God bless you. All this data that you're talking about, the top paragraph, the second paragraph, this is all documented information. The third paragraph, or the third sentence there, is that also documented?
Yes.
I mean, so it's not manufactured from pieces of information that you found here and there. This is information that is...
In fact, Congressman Khan, John Conyers, it's in the 18th Congressional, I forgot a copy of it here if you want to see it, record. He put the Moore Commission right in the record because the federal government refused to have an investigation.
And he didn't want it to be lost.
He didn't want it to be lost, that's why he put it in the congressional record.
And that's this document?
Yes.
Okay, that we have.
For the city attorney, can we make a motion on this tonight, even though it's not in the...
Certainly, I think so, yes.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve these, the wording that you put.
I'd like to, before that, I'd like to hear from Mr. McCullough, he has one comment.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make it clear that this issue has been brought to the Parks and Beautification Committee, and they've approved the concept of the layout and the concept of the project overall, but correct me if I'm wrong, but did not weigh in on any of the verbiage. So it has been their approvals.
You never talked about any plaques, or any wording on any plaques?
Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, I was at Parks and Beautification Committee back in January, I think it was, and I think the record will reflect that it was approved by Parks and Beautification and that the wording on any plaques will be deferred to staff for review and approval.
Correct.
So, and I believe that the city managers are bringing it to city council for their approval on this.
Well, I believe the Parks Committee is meeting this week.
Where is it?
I would prefer, I know you're in a hurry to get this done, but I would prefer to just take it back to the Parks and Beautification Committee just to review and their recommendations before we go ahead and...
More...
They've already reviewed.
They've already reviewed. They've already reviewed.
It's just the wording on the plaques and that's up to the city manager, staff and?
Well.
It's been brought before us.
Clearly, clearly I recognize that this was, at a certain level, if this plaque said, "We're hereby memorializing the, those lost on the USS Liberty that wouldn't be coming before you," to be perfectly honest. We would work with Mr. Eren since we do on many other plaques and such and would be putting forth. I recognize fully that this was a different type of memorial, as I indicated to council. The reason for the email yesterday was to give you a heads-up in the language that we had worked on yesterday afternoon, Dr. Wagner and Mr. Eren and myself. And I thought this was important enough that we wanted council to weigh in on this decision.
I think something like this can always be politicized if people want to do it. And if you delay it, that's all that's going to happen, you know, it's just going to get politicized and I, all there is on there are statements of fact. There's nothing, there's nothing but statements of fact on that plaque. There's nothing incorrect on it, and if somebody approved it, it's incorrect, then I would certainly remove it. But I know that there isn't. And that, we've talked, you know, every veteran here is behind it, just about every veteran in the county that I know is behind this thing.
I don't think there's any condemnation for the, the US, the US government. It was originally thought that it was an accident, the investigation was concluded, and it was concluded that it was deliberate. They're just stating two different opinions with different information.
I, I mean, the fact that Admiral, Admiral Isaac Kitt came on board the day after, if you have these guys in the prison that should tell you enough. I mean, and they shouldn't be able to get away with it.
But I mean, your plaque isn't condemning that.
No.
All it's stating is it was determined it was deliberate. And that's my opinion that, that's why it's not political. If you said they were trying to cover it up or they were doing something.
Even an Israeli pilot, uh, did not want to fire on the liberty.
There was an Israeli pirate that identified the ship as American, his name was Ethan Tavon. He identified the ship as American and when he came in to land in prison. So there was no question, you know, the liberty after, you know, there was two sets of flights that were recalled in midair from the USS Saratoga and the Americana, two sets of flights, they go fifteen flight minutes away. And when they returned, the torpedo boats came in and one torpedo hit, killed twenty-five guys. Had they proceeded, there was a good chance they would not have died. So, and, and there's so many facts that are covered up, you know, Admiral Tolly was one of the admirals on the, one of the ships, I know it was, I think it was the Saratoga. And even when he's gone to the liberty meetings and the guy cried, you know, but they couldn't help, but they weren't allowed to help. I mean, they were recalled in midair by Lyndon John. Secretary McNamara got on the phone, recalled it, told the guys to recall the, the flights. And Admiral Geis wouldn't take the order. He says you're going to have to get the President of the United States to, to recall them. So, which is what happened. I'd very much like to get on with it, you know, I mean, this has been talked about for forty-seven years now. It's been bounced around, you know, and I'd hate to see it bounce around out of this meeting, I really would.
Again, I would like to make a motion.
And I'll support that.
To, that, that council take action to approve the proposed wording on the monument and the optional wording for the Veterans Memorial Park.
And I'm supporting that.
I think it would be an honor for me and Stia to have this.
I'm happy to honor the thirty-four Americans who died. I'm just, I'm not sure that this is the appropriate wording.
Can we take, can we begin, go?
Discussion is done.
Any other discussion? Michelle, please take the role.
Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodley?
Yes.
Mayor Prokounzary?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Harkel?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
No.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
I think you're the first city in America that has approved something like this.
Next, we'll move on to a report from the Finance Department and the Oil and Gas Investment Board. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization or department. At this time, Mr. Ed Refor, report on the activities of the Finance Department.
Mayor Kenny, members of council, tonight I'm here to give two presentations, I'll try to keep them brief. The first is for the Oil and Gas Investment Board, and the second will be for a report on the Finance Department. The picture that you have in front of you shows some of the wells out towards the industrial park area that produce royalties that help to fund the, the oil and gas. The second picture here is Aztec Producing's gas processing facility also located in the industrial park. Just a quick overview of the Oil and Gas Fund, it's a charter-protected trust fund that was voted on by the electorate. Established to preserve the royalties from city-owned mineral rights for the future generation for the benefit of the citizens of the United States.
Could I ask one question? What, what year was that charter-protected trust fund set up?
I can tell you in a little bit, I'll get, get to that at the end. And I'm going to speak more about the history of the presentation. The Oil and Gas Investment Board is established to oversee the investment of the Oil and Gas Fund, and they have selected Bartlett and Company as the investment advisor. The lead investment portfolio manager is Woody Ubel, who deals primarily equities, and his colleague Troy Snyder, who deals in fixed income. The Oil and Gas Board consists of Mayor Allen Kenny, who's the chair, myself as the vice chair, Mayor Prokounzary, Doug Parks and Steve Brower. City manager is a non-voting member and Cindy Lakovich is the longtime recording secretary. There's been a lot of discussion about the history of the Oil and Gas Fund and what it's been used for. Administration in the near future is going to be preparing a detailed history of the Oil and Gas Fund from archival sources, from minutes, from city budgets, from city audits, to kind of give council and the community a whole picture of the Oil and Gas Fund. There's, there's actually a tremendous amount of activity around this from the time that the royalties first started coming in until today. And I just want to make sure that the record is clear as to what those different uses of that and the different actions that different councils have taken. It's going to take a little bit of a while to compile that, but we are going to do that. And I will say, based on some preliminary looking at that, it's really not a linear path, it's kind of bounced around a bit depending on what's been going on in the city. So stay tuned for, for further information on that. This chart here shows the royalties that have been received since nineteen ninety-six on an annual basis. You can see back in the early, in mid, or late nineties, early two thousands, they were, you know, fair amount higher. They really dropped down low here with a combination of oil prices and lower production. And then I believe they did some secondary recovery techniques in this time period and it's been very stable since then, around a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. The accumulated royalties or the principal of the Oil and Gas Fund are just a shade over seven point five million. You can see the history of that since nineteen ninety-six, it just grows steadily as we receive those royalties each year. Oil and gas earnings, this would include interest, and then more recently dividends and realized and unrealized gains. You can see the chart there. Two thousand and eight, in March, is when we started investing the fund in the market as opposed to the CDs. And of course, that was coinciding with a low point in the market. So you can see the, the investments have been quite well since then. I'm projecting about eight hundred thousand dollars or maybe eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year, that includes some unrealized gains, depending on what the market does the last two weeks of the month or the two months of the year.
Just one, another quick question. Could you, can you explain why we changed the investment back in two thousand and seven or eight, the reason we?
Sure, and that'll be part of the history that I'm going to prepare. But at that point in time, prior to that, we were basically investing in local bank CDs. We had a ladder portfolio of investments. We saw an opportunity and council endorsed that to pursue a change in the state law. Because at that time, we were limited to what types of investment vehicles we could invest the funds of the Oil and Gas Trust Fund in. They were limited to short-term investments, things like CDs, commercial paper, bankers' acceptances, that sort of thing. The state treated these funds as tax dollars and they, they wanted to protect tax dollars, so Public Act Twenty limited to what types of investments that we could invest in. We felt that the Oil and Gas Fund was more appropriately invested like an endowment fund or a perpetuity. It's basically serves the same purpose as the state's Natural Resources Trust Fund, which is also funded from the royalties on state-owned land. And the state's Natural Resources Trust Fund was allowed to invest in securities just like a public pension fund, basically under the same rules. So we spoke with our state legislature legislators at the time, Senator McManus and Representative Pellzrock, and Senator McManus introduced some legislation to allow city-owned or local municipality-owned oil and gas trust funds to be invested the same way that the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund is invested, which is like a public pension fund. And that law passed in two thousand and eight.
Thank you.
This chart here shows the Oil and Gas Fund principal, and since two thousand and eight, we've, we've been accumulating earnings above and beyond what the principal is because of those unrealized gains. So right now, we're at about two point eight million dollars above what the principal level is. So the whole fund itself is just a shade over ten million dollars right now. The Oil and Gas Fund Investment Policy Statement guides our investment and asset allocations and establishes performance benchmarks. It determines the annual spendable amount, which I'll speak of a little bit more in a minute. The last revisions to that policy were suggested by the Oil and Gas Investment Board and approved by council in two thousand and thirteen. That did three things, it removed the mandatory local CD investment, made it optional, it increased the equity asset allocation to sixty-five percent and lowered the spending rule to four percent. And that last one's particularly important because what that does is it really sets the fund up for a sustainable future in terms of how much money is being pulled out on an annual basis. The outlook for returns in the market and equities in particular moving forward are probably going to be lower than what they've been historically in the past. And by reducing that spending rule percentage by half percent from four point five to four, it allows us to make the fund more sustainable moving forward. This is a snapshot of an asset allocation report as of March thirty-first that our investment advisor provides. You can see it's about sixty-eight percent in equity at this point and about thirty percent in fixed income at that point in time, which is roughly in line with the asset allocation. And then this shows the performance of the account. I think the thing that's really, uh, a high point of this is the annualized return since inception, which was three thirty-one oh nine, was thirteen point one six percent. We actually started investing in the fund in March of oh eight, but it was, it was not a complete year. And if they included those returns, because obviously once the market bought them in two thousand and eight, it skyrocketed back up, this number would be considerably bigger, but they're not allowed to show that. But even so, thirteen percent on an annualized basis for the last six years is extremely impressive considering we've also been pulling money out to the tune of about one point nine million based on the spending rule. It's been a very good performance and then we're very happy with Bartlett. We conducted a sensitivity analysis and presented that to the Oil and Gas Board at the last meeting or maybe two meetings ago. We basically examined the Oil and Gas portfolio under different market condition scenarios. The four scenarios that we looked at, and this was an exercise by myself and our investment advisor, was average GDP growth, below-average GDP growth, a moderate recession and a sharp recession. And what that analysis showed is that the fund, as structured, will produce relatively stable income stream for years to come. And that's, the reason for that is there are basically three things that are driving that. One is we have a huge amount of unrealized gains in the portfolio, which because of the timing of entering the market will help to buffer things in the future. We base the spending rule on a twelve-quarter moving average, which also helps to buffer on the ups and downs, similar to like they do with public pension funds. And we have a appropriate asset allocation coupled with an appropriate spending rule percentage. So I was very pleased to see, even in a recession scenario, that the, the amount of spendable dollars being spun off really does not decrease as much as one might think because of that. So that's, that's all really encouraging. Any questions on the Oil and Gas Fund before I move on to the Finance Department? Okay. I'll try to keep this one short. Not a lot has changed. That's our primary transaction counter, we get a lot of people that come through here every, every day. Quickly, I can't say enough about my staff, particularly the last couple of years when things have gotten tight and funds have gotten tight and the department's been being asked to be more and more, they just have really stepped up. And quite frankly, as we mentioned in the, in the white paper, the clerk and the treasurer's department kind of function together even though they're budgeted for separately. City clerk, Michelle Rice, got twenty-five years of experience, lots of really high-quality professional designations and just an all-around pleasure to work with. Mary Bachmann has been with the city for fifteen years. Again, she has, she's a master municipal clerk, she has a licensed insurance agent. Both Michelle and Mary maintain those certifications, as well as Michelle maintains some financial certifications. Heather Peffley has been with the city for fourteen years. And as part of our initiative to get people not so much cross-trained but trained in the different areas, all the different areas that our office handles, she's been attending the Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association's Treasurer Institute and this year is going to be starting the Clerk's Institute. So at the end of those programs, she'll be, get some certifications for both treasury and clerk. And then myself, as the chief financial officer, I have a few professional designations in the finance area. Combined, our office has sixty-six years of experience. This is a quick snapshot, this shows the organizational structure. You can see that Mike Carey from the Ramso Theater also reports into our office. Office responsibilities, this is only on the finance side, obviously the clerk side handles a lot of things too, but basically anything to do with money, whether it's receiving the revenue from water customers or tax bills. We invest the cash, although we're doing limited investing because of the interest rate environment right now. Pay all the bills, we arrange for all the financing for the city, whether that be through banks or through bond issues, do the budgeting in conjunction with the city manager, handle all the accounting, including the annual audit, financial analysis, financial reporting and just handling a lot of questions. Quickly, some of the metrics of the office, you've seen this before, we process about eight thousand tax bills per year, forty thousand water bills. They have up to a hundred and twenty-five customers per day at the counter. Some days, when tax bills are due, water bills are going to be closer to two hundred, which if you're ever getting in the office on one of those days, it keeps everybody happy. Additional responsibilities, we stay open through lunch, kind of direct traffic. We still handle Ramso Theater back office things, even though we have the executive director who's handling most of day-to-day activities, who are there supporting for that. We deal with all the technology in the city and I also serve as the brownfield administrator. Strategic goals, council updated their strategic plan, I believe, in March, and there's a number of those that kind of relate to our office. One of the goals was to try to find increased revenue for streets. Obviously, there's been a lot of discussion about streets and the five-year improvement plan and the asset management process, and we got some direction from council at the last week's session on a way forward to, to look at increasing some revenue. So, well, we have been involved and will continue to be involved in that process. Another goal was to develop a sustainable operating model for the Ramso Theater. Towards that end, we are having a strategic planning process that we're very excited about, coming up in August. Almost everybody that we needed to have at this particular event can make it. We've got a very highly qualified facilitator who not only has a tremendous amount of expertise in this area, but also has local connections, and I think it'll be a really superior product and we're all, and hopefully can set the stage for the next chapter of Ramso. Two point four goal is, is to use technology citywide and in particular the GIS and continually improving the website. I think you saw some of the results of our GIS in conjunction with the city engineer with a street plan. If, if and when we get the SAW grant, that will also ramp up. So the GIS is really starting to move forward. And as time allows, we're, we're taking a look at the website and trying to do targeted enhancements there as well. Two point five, energy efficiency. We did meet with Honeywell. We did meet with Honeywell. They came in and offered to do an energy analysis, a real detailed level for all the city buildings. We haven't followed up with that with them yet, but that's something that the schools routinely do, and something that we may consider doing, and then go back to council with the results of that. Basically, they make suggestions onto how to save money with reasonable paybacks, and will guarantee those savings, so you can use that to finance that. Before I leave, I just wanted to touch on the clerk, Treasury, Finance Services White Paper. We presented that in February 2014. Topics included in that particular paper were the structure of the department, our duties and responsibilities, benchmark with other communities, different options moving forward, and also a succession plan. The recommended course of action out of that white paper was to create an administrative services department out of the clerk and treasurer's office and kind of phase that in as time goes by. Also, that paper recommended that in order to do that, that another position be created and that the department be restructured per this chart, which is in the paper that you all received. The reason I bring that up is, we really didn't move forward with that in last year's budget. It kind of got put on hold, but I think it will be brought back up as part of the next year's budget. And again, it kind of depends on revenue and then what's happening in the city. But it is important to know that we are going to need to be able to do some succession planning, because we're expecting some retirements in the not-too-near-future, and it does take time to get people trained and in a position where they can step in and assume those duties. So we just want to be real cognizant of that as we're looking out at the future to see which direction we're going in. And I know that it kind of, it was presented, and because of other budgetary constraints, it didn't really get, you know, wasn't acted on. But it's kind of just in suspension right now, but I just wanted to put that back in front of council. That's all I have, if there's any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Next, we'll move on to concerns and comments. Citizens can comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment in municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Is there anyone who'd like to comment? Yes, sir.
347, 367, 11th Street. What are you doing? Get your pair of pants, you know. Madam Mayor, I got a few more complaints, and that'll be the last time you'll see me for another year. My complaint this time is that Taj Mahal we got down there on River Street, and for some reason, the heat got shut off in there in a water base field. Now, there was never anything in the paper to tell me how much that fiasco costs. And I'd like that to be printed in the paper, so everybody in Manistee know that that costs us money to get that water base fixed. We supplement that thing at 40 grand a year. I go down there, there's all kinds of empty slips. I got a scanner at home. Paul will come over the scanner, "The Sangs that buy gas don't go to the city marina, they're too high-priced." Now, was our marina that high-priced? That the people are sending everybody down to the Sangs to buy gas? Better be looked into. If you want that marina filled up, you better do something. Because it's never filled up down there at any time except for the Century Book Show. That's the only time that marina is filled up. Also, the Ramso Theater. We supplement that at 40 grand a year. Hired a manager for 60 grand a year. Now, I don't know what he's doing over there, but I haven't heard anything from him lately. And another thing, this headly amendment that you guys want to maybe put on the ballot, the people in this community better get off their duffs and get out there and vote against it. Good Lord, how much money do you think you can squeeze out of us little people? This is my last week of working, luckily, maybe luckily. I couldn't have made it till the end of the month, seven days a week. And that's what I've been working most of my life. I've been paying taxes in this community for over 50 years. You're taxing me right out of my home. You ate up my 12, my social security raise for this year, and you started eating into my social security. You're not only spending the city budget, you're spending my budget, and the budget of all of us little people out there that cannot afford it. Also, another thing, I shave twice a week. So I save water. And you people want to stick us little people that have strong to save a little bit of money on water so we can survive, you're going to charge us a higher rate than you're going to charge the rest of the people in the community, and I don't see where that's right. And what's wrong with these people out in the community that they're not getting out there and voting against these? Now, if any few people are coming up for election in November, have anybody running against you, they ought to get off their duffs and get out there and vote against you. They said you've been sitting up there too long. There's only one way to get rid of you, let's get out there and vote. Not talk to me, that doesn't do a bit of good, because I come and talk to you and it goes here and one ear and out the other, I believe. So anyway. All the people have good paying jobs with good benefits, couple of good pensions with good benefits. I worked for a low wage all my life, I had to go to work when I was 14 years old, not by choice. My three older brothers were in the army, and sometimes I didn't have a slice of bread on the table for a meal, and I don't think there's any of you up there can say that. Now, the money you're drawing there is more than I get for social security a year, and you keep raising, raising. Where in the heck are all of us little people supposed to get this money from? If you can afford it, you all got a good paying job, you're drawing good money sitting up there. So think of all us little people just a little bit sometimes, will you? Because like I'm talking, a lot of people are getting mighty disgusted out there, you're giving the administration everything they want, and now they want you to put that headly amendment on the ballot for us to vote. Well, if you don't vote that down, we're mighty stupid people, I'm going to tell you. I want to thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Gary Vitalski, 159 Quincy Street. I want to thank you, Mr. Ford here. Couple comments you said here, I think you said Ramso was being subsidized $40,000. Ramso was subsidized $310,830 last year, and I think it's $280,000 or $279,000 this year in 2015. So I just wanted to correct that. In addition to the marina being subsidized, the 40,000, the marina doesn't generate enough money to even make a principal payment on the money that was borrowed from the oil and gas fund to pay the loan back, it's only making interest-only payments. That's the kind of financial condition these leaders have driven Manistee into. I was here last week, and I made a recommendation and a request that the oil and gas fund be put on the ballot, so the citizens of Manistee can vote on whether or not a portion of that should be used for street repairs. I'm here again this evening, being more specific. I would like to see the oil and gas fund be put on the ballot for up to $3 million of the principal amount to be used for local streets. Let's have the citizens of Manistee decide how this money is going to be spent. I've heard how it's supposed to be saved for the future generations, and yes, that is correct, but is it ironic that the majority of the funds being spent today is for a one-year annual subsidy for the marina and the Ramso? Where is the future benefit of the generation on the one-year subsidy? Rose is going to give decades of service to this community, and it's going to give relief to the poor people of this town that desperately need it. I also heard, oh, we got these great things like the 4 percent spending rule that was established in 2013. Okay, what was one of the very first thing that was done after the spending rule was established? It was overridden. It was overridden immediately after it was established to get $100,000 contribution subsidy to the water and sewer fund. Okay? Now, if you guys don't want to put the oil and gas funds subsidies undeveloped yourself, I'm sure there'll be petition passed around, there's a lot of very upset people like Mr. Ford here said. So please give it serious consideration, or I think the people are going to move forward on their own. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? I seem not to move on to the officials and staff, just a quick.
Just one thing that I have council petition packets available for the first, third, the seventh districts, if anybody's interested in picking one up. I have a few here with me tonight. The petitions are due back on July 27.
Thank you. To the man.
Just a couple of quick, your honor. Hey, number one, I put a photograph up on the screen. We are having a pretty continuous problem of trash being dumped at the recycling container. This is the recycling container, the Department of Public Works is in the background. This would be to the far northern edge of that. My widescreen car is in the background behind that. This was a pretty, this wasn't one of the larger piles of trash that's been down there. The reason for tonight is to really, to let the residents know that when trash is dumped down there, it's what a requirement is, is that the city staff have to go out and clean up that material, and then we have to landfill it at that particular cost. The materials that are down the ground there are not recyclables, it simply was a convenient location for trash to be dumped in there. We're going to get some additional signage down there, really trying to help educate the residents about the cost of that kind of legal dumping down there. I know Councilmember Whitliffe has contacted me on multiple occasions about the dumping of the trash down there, so we just wanted to kind of bring that to the attention of folks tonight. I didn't have a photograph of the one that was two weeks ago or last week, about three yards of material were down there.
I called you on Monday.
Yep, you did.
Yeah, it was three or four times the size.
Yep, and I, by the time we, I called you up the next morning, it had already been cleaned up, which is the reason we don't have a photograph of that. But I had taken one from the week earlier, so just wanted to put that out there for the public. Secondly, we are tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon, tomorrow morning, actually, we're at 9:00 a.m., we're meeting with the federal charter township, Manistee Area Public Schools, Road Commission on 12th Street. And I know Councilmember Gustad has asked several times about the conversations on the 12th Street between Oak and Maple. We are meeting again to talk about that particular project tomorrow morning, and hopefully we'll have some additional news to share with council soon after that. Thank you, your honor.
So you turn.
Nothing, your honor, thank you.
DPW?
Nothing, your honor.
Finance?
Nothing, your honor.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes, I'd just like to make a comment that I believe that improvements to Memorial, Veterans Memorial Park is a good thing, and I think the council were voting for the concept. And I got one other thing is, on 1st Street at the Roundabout, again, this year it's empty, I thought we were going to do something down there.
That's not.
Go fill the air. Or somebody refreshed my memory, but I wouldn't, here it is, somewhere again, and it's empty. There's not even a we didn't or nothing.
Well, I kind of like it that way personally.
Well, gotta get something to look at.
Well, again, we, what occurred was, is that the Chamber of Commerce wanted to put a sculpture, a form of a sculpture, or some kind of a artistic piece down in that center. The concern that we had as administration, including the DPW director and the police chief, is, is that is not a, that roundabout is not accessed through walkways. So we couldn't have something which was going to encourage citizens or residents, visitors, to be walking across the road during those heavy traffic periods. So there were several meetings, I believe Councilmember Horcald, Councilmember Zering, Mayor Fortem Zering were involved in one of these, two of those meetings. That was being driven by the former chamber director, Miss Melissa Reed. Upon her departure, I think it had significantly dissipated. The reason that there's not grass down there is, is some of the grass were planted down there, wasn't an appropriate species down there. I believe they were going to replant some of that grass down there.
The specific grass that was specified to be put in that roundabout was actually a bluish color, and it was growing very well. But the type of grass that was specified is an invasive species. What was specified was a genome that does not reproduce. And the nursery that supplied, the local contractor supplied half of, half of order of the proper stuff, had to reorder more stuff, and when that came in, it was actually the genome that does reproduce and seed. And so when that was discovered, the contractor came back last year, put roundup on all that grass to kill it, removed it, and then it's been replanted. So what you're seeing down there right now is just simply the new seedlings of the doom grass that were planted last fall. And the doom grass is the native green doom grass that you see in all the islands and along the beaches.
I don't believe it's coming up.
But there, would there be a problem, honestly, in just planting that in doom grass and calling it good?
It keeps it nice.
Do something with it.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, we don't want, we don't want maintenance, we want to limit, limit the amount of maintenance that we have to put in there.
I like the idea, if anything, anything low-profile, because it affects the view corridor as well.
It impacts the view corridor.
That's why I wanted the little wall with the balance.
Does that, really, have to be kept?
There's a water service to the center that's chilling, but there's a little irrigation in it right now.
What if you, what if you put a flag, just a flagpole, a couple of flagpoles with the American flag and the city flag on it?
I think the issue may be with there, is I think you may have some, your view corridors will be impacted by the flagpoles there.
Well, it's no different than down at, back at my house there, going into the Harbor Village. There's no problem with that turn with that view right there, you got that, and three flagpoles, it's going to.
Who's responsible for the flagpoles?
Two inches?
Yeah, my perspective would be is, is that that's a significantly different roundabout on Harbor Village area that's surrounded by condominiums. I think this is a significantly different view corridor when you're coming down 1st Street. That's just my own personal opinion.
Roundabout is a roundabout, you're going around.
If I can take off my public works director hat, and I'm going to put on my Chamber of Congress, I'm on the board of the chamber, and so I served on the committee when the chamber hat came to you and asked for permission to explore putting something there. The former director, Melissa Reed, had started a visioning process and included a multiple different, a pretty diverse group of people, started down a path of coming up with some sort of competitive sculpture, or sculpture idea, where artists could submit concepts, and then the discussion was that it would have some sort of a public vote on what they believed would be the best. When she departed the chamber and in that interim space, and when the new director was hired, the chamber board decided that it was more important to get the new director focusing on specific chamber events, and decided not to continue pursuing that. So that project kind of died at that point. And it was shortly after that, then we discovered the issue with the grass. So my knowledge, nothing else has been active on the inside of that.
That'd be a perfect thing to ask the Parks and Beautification Commission.
That's going to be my, yeah. That's going to be my suggestion.
I mean, it seems like that would fit within.
Papers.
Anything else?
No, no, no.
Is there?
No.
Is there? Is there? Is there? Is there? Mayor Fortem Zering, do you have anything?
Yes, I do, actually. At this time, I would like to reopen Mr. Ed Sangs' request for a deep water port on his property.
Does it have to be a no vote to open it?
And I voted no.
Did you? Yes, I asked. What's?
Not an agenda item, is it?
I think she's asking for it to be created as an agenda item.
On future? On the next?
For the next, for the next, what would it be, the first meeting in July?
July 1st.
Are you asking to open up the whole concept again, or what are?
Not at this time, but I think it is something that needs to be reviewed, open it in the district, the concept of it, after nine years of not even tortoise-like growth.
So council officially voted that down previously. So my comfort level would be is, is if we have a majority of council that would want that to be brought back on, the council that to be brought back on the council agenda.
I support that.
Bring it back up. No.
Does she, in a second, because I'll vote, I'll say yes.
This majority of council, which is indicating they would like to stay back on the agenda. I'm not sure that July 1st, I would like to have some more conversation about what specifically we're looking at doing. Are you looking at simply bringing back the vote that was taken, the specific motion that was made? Are we looking at, are we looking at doing a more comprehensive review of the peninsula plan itself?
No, at this time, I would like to have the vote brought back up for the agenda.
So that would take?
Brought back to the agenda, but at a later date, I would also like to see a work session done in the Peninsula District. To me, they're two separate.
Changing the zoning of the Peninsula District isn't our responsibility, but we would have to change the development agreement first.
Correct.
For zoning.
Can we do that?
Make some changes there.
You're talking about the develop, the vote on the develop.
That we just recently took, correct.
I think we put it, can put it on the agenda, the question, you know, the propriety of the motion and we get into the Robertsville's border issue, I guess, at that meeting, but I think that, you know, council person can ask something if it was on the agenda or should be put on the agenda.
I guess I would like to know exactly what you're asking for.
Our last vote that we did. Yeah, we voted down. It was for consideration of reopening the, reopening the development to allow shipping.
Deep water port.
Yeah, and, you know, deep water port, shipping.
Commercial.
Yes, thank you, commercial shipping.
Is that in April, we think?
And that's what you're asking?
April or May.
And that's what you're asking for?
Must've been in April, yes.
To open it up to a deep water port again.
I'm asking us to revisit that, so I would like it to be back on the agenda. I'm thinking it was either the first part of May or April.
Just so we're clear, I mean, the discussion that the city manager and I were just having here with that comment is the Robertsville's border issue is that the party from the successful side of that previous motion is going to, is going to need to raise that issue.
That would be me, because it was voted down.
Just, I was just hoping to find the actual meeting in which you discussed it, the language that was.
Let's see.
I think it was the 22nd of April. Then I have to go to the planning commission first?
That was a work session.
Okay, so the planning commission. I was away on that meeting.
The 22nd was a work session.
22nd was a work session. Fifteen.
Because we had so many of them.
Is your senior ever that meeting that was on?
It was in April, so the actual date I don't remember. I know it went three, three.
Three, two.
But Mr. Whittle said that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll find it.
And planning zoning commission, they got turned down, then goes recommendation to come back to council.
It's a work session.
We'll find it for council.
Because I'm not finding it here. I tried to find it earlier, and that's why it's.
We'll find it.
Thank you.
Anything else? What comes in?
I'd like to just make a comment, and I think the primary program is, I think it's a very discussion that we have to have, the potential that's down there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My only comment is we've discussed it and discussed it and discussed it, and now all of a sudden we want it brought up again. How many times do we have to bring something up before it changes?
Well, we had one vote.
I don't care how many votes we had, we had a vote.
Councilmember Whitliffe, anything else?
I would like to bring up, have this put on the agenda for future generate, or future agenda about culling the deer. I know we talked about it in the past. Right, but last night I took my dog for a walk and it got rambled by a deer. I just think it's a dangerous situation in the city with bikers, motorists. Gardens are getting destroyed, feces all over. It just has to be done. Has to be taken care of. So I'd like to have that put, put on the agenda.
What we had talked about is having that on an upcoming work session agenda. We just have to find one time to do something. We had talked about having that on an upcoming work session agenda, and we had committed to doing that. I think the work session is the right location. We are, we are going to bring in the same information that we have brought before. I don't think really anything has changed.
Except the deer herd.
Yeah, no, I don't, I'm not sure that's true or not. The information that we received, that all councilmen received, we've had biologists come, I think on two separate occasions, we've had the N R biologist come and speak to council at least once I know for sure. Chief Botman has all the information. The, the options for culling the deer is not going to change. It's starting to require utilization of deadly force within the city or adjacent to the city, directly adjacent to the city on city-owned property. So none of that information is going to change, so we are just simply going to bring back the, the same information that has been previously discussed and present again to city council.
Anything else?
And then after our last meeting, last Tuesday, I stopped over at Mrs. Waterman's house, and she is still, she's not happy, she's upset with what happened with her hedges. So I'm asking if you and Jeff could visit her and see what, I don't know what can be done.
I was at her home two weeks ago. I was at Mrs. Waterman's home two weeks ago. She had sent me a letter. She'd actually sent me a note about her cancer condition and some things of that nature, so I went and visited with her, and we talked very, very briefly about her hedges. We talked more extensively about the need to not trim her, I'm going to get the name of the tree. She has a flowering crab in the front of some type. So we talked extensively about the fact that we wanted to make sure that that one wasn't touched and trimmed. I try and touch base with her once every two to three months. I've been stopping over at the home. And we'll continue to do so.
But it's upsetting her, you know, with everything going, going on with her.
Respectfully, I don't think there's really an answer to it. The hedges got trimmed. They did leaf out. She said, you know, it's kind of leafed out, it's not what I want, but they, they have been trimmed. I'm not sure she would really appreciate having both of us at her home at the same time, honestly. We can, we can chat about that. But I've talked with her on multiple occasions about this particular event, but I'm happy to go back and talk with her again. I mean, I enjoy her company, I, she's a lovely lady, and I've been just trying to stop over every so often and see what she has.
Thank you. Thank you.
To answer your question, March 4th.
March?
March 4th.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson? I have nothing. Next in agenda is consideration of joining into an executive session. City Mayor Mitch Deis, as regards the executive session this evening, as permitted by the Open Meetings Act, Section 8C, to discuss contract negotiations with United Steelworkers, the Police Officers Association of Michigan, and the Command Officers Association of Michigan.
I am. I am. I'm going to go ahead and do it.